Thank you, Warren. It is my joy to welcome you all to the first of a series of Bible studies here at the 2023 Presbyterians for Earth Care Conference. We are meeting in Harrisonburg, Virginia, but there are people meeting and viewing this over 200 across the country. And we hope, as you share the recordings, many, many more beyond that. This evening and for the coming days, we are blessed with outstanding biblical scholar. Patricia Toll has served our church in multiple roles, probably for the longest time, as a professor of Old Testament in Louisville Presbyterian Seminary. She is also well-known to many people in this organization for the outstanding book that she wrote several years ago, which is The Wonderful Inhabiting Eden: Christians, the Bible, and the Ecological Crisis. Just out of curiosity, a show of hands for those here, how many have the book?
How many use it in their churches for a book study? We have copies that those of you who didn't raise your hand have been waiting for. She has very graciously brought it this evening. And those who raised their hands can tell you, you need to have this book. I and others can also tell you, Inhabiting Eden is one that you need to bring to your church and have a book study. But I have another request of you. How many have taken that book and donated it to your public library? We have books for you as well to take to your public library. I want everyone to be an environmental evangelist. And a simple, non-fishing Presbyterian way of doing that is, get this book into the library, because you'll never know whose lives it will touch. The good news is, she has not done right.
Is there a problem here? Thank you, Casey, the behind-the-scenes tech support who makes sure everything works well. So get the book for the library. But the good news is, she has something coming up that we want you to get into your churches again. A year from now, so we're giving you plenty of headtime to prepare the way for a year from now. She has written the Presbyterian Church Women's Churchwide Study for the year 2024 to 2025. How many of you have Presbyterian women's groups in your churches? Not nearly enough. This is the book to get them started again. I can tell you, if we spend time addressing the issues of the day, and there's nothing more important than climate change, that will attract people to our churches. That will revitalize our churches, including Presbyterian women. And if you can't get the PW going in your church again, I think they'll still sell you copies so you can do the book study in your church. I have been blessed with a preview of it. And it's something that is truly a gift, not only to the church, but to the world. We are blessed for the next few days here to get a sneak preview. So without further ado, let us welcome the Reverend Dr. Patricia Toll.
Thank you, Bruce. I am supposed to mute my Zoom. You've got it. All technical details are taken care of. Okay, we're good then. First of all, thank you so much, Reverend Dr. Moffett, for your word tonight. She and I can both certify that we did not cross-check about what we were going to be speaking about. But as you can see, she preached on hope. And I'm talking about grief and hope. And as you were speaking, I was so glad, because I'm going to mostly talk about grief with a little bit of hope. So you can go back and listen to her sermon again after my Bible study, and it'll probably be good for everybody. So before I begin, I want to draw your attention to the QR code up in the corner there that you can, if you want to aim your phones at, get the website. It will lead you to a page with a lot of resources relevant to this week's Bible study. And I'll be showing it again at the conclusion tonight and here and there throughout the four days. Over these next four days, I know that we are going to be sharing a lot of information and ideas together. We're going to be catching up with old friends and making new friends and worshiping God. Most of all, we're going to be renewing ourselves and one another for the great work that we know we need to do, that of healing a creation in deep distress. Even to say that last part, "creation in deep distress," is overwhelming. How can we, small as we are, do anything? The world's crises overwhelm us, and yet we come together because we believe that God is calling us to do what we can. And we believe that in this calling, God is with us. God is our help. So in our Bible study sessions this week, I plan for us to explore four pairs of contrasting realities that we are living in. The first pair tonight is grief and hope. Grief and hope may at first seem to be opposites, but I believe they complement each other. They are both necessary for a fuller comprehension of the present and a deeper approach to our work of mending the ecological crises that we face. Before I go further, there's a little echo in here. Is it okay? Okay, then I just want to listen to it. Some of us became aware of the threat the climate crisis poses before it was very much in the news. And in that, we were somewhat like Aldo Leopold, though long time after his time. In his essay, "The Round River," in the midst of laments over the thoughtless changes that he saw humans making in the land, Leopold voiced so acutely the secret sorrow of knowing that these actions were unraveling the ecosystem. "One of the penalties of an ecological education," he said, "is that one lives alone in a world of wounds. Much of the damage inflicted on land is quite invisible to laymen. An ecologist must either harden his shell and make believe that the consequences of science are none of his business, or he must be the doctor who sees the marks of death in a community that believes itself well and does not want to be told otherwise." Back in the 1940s, before many of us were born, Leopold knew the deep sense of alienation that we now feel when we watch the nation, industries, and other people around us ignoring nature's destruction. As earth care advocates, we come from across the map, from very different circumstances, from blue states, red states, blue cities in red states, blue counties in red states, urban and rural landscapes, various walks of life. But no matter our particulars, I imagine we all share that sense of discord with neighbors who, at least until recently, believed themselves to be well and did not want to be told otherwise. People doing business as usual. But some things, thankfully, are changing now. The Yale Program on Climate Change Communication has monitored American attitudes toward the climate crisis for nearly two decades. In April 2022, they reported a survey that found that the vast majority of Americans now believe that climate change is happening. And most people recognize that it's caused by us. And they are no longer unconcerned. In fact, emotional responses run from feeling afraid, angry, sad, and disgusted, to interested and even hopeful. All this means that this is a moment that is ripe to act, to speak up, to model actions, to recruit people to act who haven't before, to build on growing concern. This is all the more important when we look at the last statement on this list of findings, that despite their alarm, two-thirds of Americans don't talk about climate change with others and perhaps aren't even aware that others care as they do. This is a sad statistic. But it's also a golden opportunity for us to reach out to neighbors who are just becoming alarmed by what is happening. As climate scientist Catherine Hayhoe says, "The most important thing we can do about climate change is talk about it." I find myself running the same gamut of fear, anger, sadness, disgust, interest, and hope. Everywhere I look, I see reasons for both sorrow and optimism. In the same hour, there may be news of several disastrous climate events, deadly heat waves in Asia, devastating floods in Africa, drought and hurricane in California, wildfires in Quebec. And at the same time, news of human change forestall, the horrific effects, moves toward renewable energy, or better land management, or acts of environmental justice. Without an anchor, I would simply bounce reactively back and forth among all the good news and the bad. How can we, as Christians, find the capacity to embrace the fullness of what we are experiencing? How can we live in grief and hope at the same time, together? I believe that what allows us to temper our grief with hope and to strengthen our hope with determination and courage is our capacity for memory. Psalm 42 movingly expresses the power of holding contradictory experiences together through memory. I'd like to read parts of it with you. But first, I want to note something about the Psalms that we may know intuitively. These ancient Psalms express experiences in the first person as if the poets are living them, which they were. But they are also worded to open these experiences to their audiences, to us. For instance, when we read Psalm 23, "The Lord is My Shepherd," we don't think first that someone else who's been dead for more than 2,000 years saw God as their shepherd and keeper. Instead, we accept the invitation to place ourselves in the Psalm and to say with the Psalm, "The Lord is My Shepherd," to explore the sense of belonging and trust that those words invite. The Psalms are written by someone long ago, but they invite us in to make them ours and by following their lines, to track the same moral and emotional experience the poets knew. The Psalms are ancient. They knew nothing of our world. At the same time, they're present. Their responses to life still make meaning for us. So when Psalm 42 begins by saying, "As a deer longs for flowing streams, so my soul longs for you, O God," we don't first wonder about the psalmist's ancient soul, but instead, we recognize our own thirst for God. We experience our longing, our sadness, our dissatisfaction. Having identified with the Psalm's first line, we are invited to follow the Psalm's path to a larger wholeness. "As a deer longs for flowing streams, so my soul longs for you, O God." My soul, thirst for God, for the living God. "When shall I come and behold the face of God? My tears have been my food, day and night, while people say to me continually, 'Where is your God?'" Maybe the Psalm's intensity might seem exaggerated to us. Maybe we haven't literally been feasting on our tears, day and night. And maybe nobody is literally asking us where God is. But if the poet could feel all this so long ago and keep faith, then so can we feel our own longings and discomforts, knowing that we aren't alone in them. Maybe it isn't, at first glance, God's presence that we're thirsting for the most. Maybe it's justice in an unjust world, or healing for a sick democracy, or for a community in distress, or a diseased landscape. Maybe we seek relief from the worry that people we love will not thrive in the coming events. We know the difference between the way things are and the way they should be. The Psalm goes on with a remembrance and then some self-talk. "These things I remember as I pour out my soul, how I went with the throng and led them in procession to the house of God with glad shouts and songs of thanksgiving, a multitude-keeping festival." "Why are you cast down, O my soul? And why are you disquieted within me? Hope in God, for I shall again praise my help and my God." See how the psalmist sets joyous memories beside the fearful present, recalling a moment of celebration. It's in the past. It lives on only in memory. But it allows the psalmist to do that self-talk, remembering to hope in God, not because the present isn't dire, but because of the self-assurance that someday praise will return in some other form. Hope in God. The Psalm doesn't say, "Don't worry," doesn't say, "Be happy." It doesn't deny or diminish what is sorrowful in the present. It doesn't seek a return to the past. But it tempers the dreadful present by pulling up memories and revealing expectancy, embracing both sorrow and joy, both grief and hope together, two realities living side by side in our souls, both present, both powerful. The Psalm expresses the sense of painful distance from an actual place, God's sanctuary. Knowing that all things change over time, you might, like me, hold places that are very real in memory, even when they no longer exist as they did. Mountain tops, once clothed with trees, that are no longer there because of clearcutting, or wildfires, or coal mining. Coastlines that have become concrete deserts, or have even disappeared under flooding. Countryside we used to roam that have turned into suburban jungles or shopping malls, one-lane roads that are now freeways. I remember especially the places of my childhood in Austin, Texas, that have disappeared under extreme growth. Perhaps you remember a world that global warming had not yet altered, a world where the worst problems seemed solvable given time, where the weather was more predictable, where snowfall and spring birds both came in their seasons. Or if you don't remember it, you've heard about it. Like me, you may long for a day when climate change begins to lose its grip on us all. One odd thing about this poem is that it was broken into two parts at some point. Psalm 43 is actually the conclusion of Psalm 42. We can tell this because it has exactly the same refrain, "Why are you cast down, O my soul?" So what you see here in Psalm 43 is the continuation of Psalm 42. Here are the poem's final verses. "O, send out your light and your truth; let them lead me; let them bring me to your holy hill and to your dwelling. Then I will go to the altar of God, to God my exceeding joy, and I will praise you with a harp, O God, my God. Why are you cast down, O my soul? And why are you disquieted within me? Hope in God, for I shall again praise my help and my God." In the end, this Psalm moves from longing to prayer, voicing a petition for divine light and truth to vindicate the psalmist's concerns, a prayer to close the gap between the way things are and the way they ought to be. And in the meantime, the psalmist concludes by telling their inner self once again to hope in God. The Psalm does not imagine what form the future will take other than that it will be infused with God's light and will be a new sort of homecoming. There are more Psalms of lament than any other kind in Scripture. Many Psalms, like this one, Psalm 137, poignantly express realities that seem too difficult to put into words, but also too painful to be left unsaid. Ironically, this Psalm sings about the impossibility of singing. Today, there seems to be plenty of room for grief, and we can't help but feel it. If we deny it or stuff it down, it's still there, dragging on us. It's a rational response. In fact, not to feel sorrow about what is happening to us in our world would be odd. Still, it's uncomfortably difficult to say out loud. We all know about the Swedish environmental activist Greta Thunberg. Five years ago, at the age of 15, she ignited a worldwide school strike that came to be called Fridays for Future. She has asked powerful world leaders, "How dare you steal the dreams and childhood of young people with empty words while ecosystems collapse?" She has been criticized for her blunt truth speaking, yet she is only saying what a lot of us are thinking, speaking out her grief and seeing the effects of her own words have propelled her forward in climate action. So before we drown our grief in the authentic joy of greeting old friends and meeting new ones this week, before we move on from uncomfortable grief to more comfortable feelings, I want us to take a few moments together to pray. And similarly, to the prayer that we had before for our friends, I want us to invite us to simply name what we grieve, either because it's already gone, or because we fear it might soon be gone. Don't explain or offer any speeches, but in the briefest possible words, just a few, word or two, say out loud what you grieve, so we can grieve with you. Those of you who are with us remotely, please join in, either out loud or in the chat box. And now and then, as we do so, I'll say, "God in your mercy," and invite you to say with me, "Hear our prayer." So let us pray for the pains of the world that we see all around us.
Pleasures.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
Canadian wildfires.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
White ash and hemo.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
Caribbean reef fish.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
Warming ocean.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
Monarch butterflies.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
Birds on.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
A stable climate.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
Diminished bee population.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
For each other.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
Insects on my windshield.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
Climate peace.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
Severe drought.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
Pollution that prevents children from playing outside.
"God in your mercy."
Hear our prayers.
We know that you hear all our prayers, O God, and we thank you. Let's conclude our voicing of grief as the psalmist did, saying together this final verse. "Why are you cast down, O my soul? And why are you disquieted within me? Hope in God, for I shall again praise my help and my God." Now, it's not all grief, of course. There are millions, maybe billions, of people who are working to make large social changes happen. If we do succeed in bringing human society and the ecological world back from the brink, we will definitely not be returning to any world that we recognize from the past. Our landscape will look different, and not just because of solar panels and wind turbines. Our energy systems will be different, but so will our homes, our vehicles and transportation systems, our diets, our cities and farms, our woodlands, and our forests. Memory will not bring back the past. Instead, memory tinged with grief honestly named and faced will free us to be open to the future. This summer off the coast of Wales, I saw an enormous wind farm called Gwenti Moor. 160 wind turbines barely visible from the shore. I don't even know if you could see them. They're there, little pinpricks in the back. Such visible signs, they are enough to power 400,000 homes. These visible signs of change always make me happy. But even though they are awesome, such visible signs can't be enough to prop us up emotionally. They're what environmental writer Kate Davies called "extrinsic hopes." When I see one sign of the future, such as this one, I want to see another one, and another one. And that's a wish that often disappoints. Davies says, "The more we hope to achieve a particular outcome or goal, the more painful it is when we don't succeed." She and others have pointed to a different definition of hope, an orientation of the spirit more than an extrinsic signpost. So I want to conclude this evening by introducing the words of three more, beyond Diane's, important thinkers' words about hope. The first is Czech dissident Václav Havel, who spent long years working to bring democracy to his country. In 1979, from a prison cell, Havel wrote something many of us in our own time may well find familiar. "We never decided to become dissidents," he said. "We have been transformed into them without quite knowing how. We simply went ahead and did certain things that we felt we ought to do, and that seemed to us decent to do, nothing more or less." Ten years later, against all odds, his velvet revolution brought communism to an end, and Havel became the first elected president of a democratic Czechoslovakia, and later of the Czech Republic. In his writings, Havel identified hope not as being the conviction that something will turn out well, but the certainty that something makes sense regardless of how it turns out. Optimism that things will work out without our help is not enough. Hope is not a feeling, but an action, or a sustained set of actions that we see as right and necessary. With that kind of hope, we never give up with God's help. Writer, editor, and teacher Mary Hagler of the National Resources Defense Council uses the uses the art of storytelling to help people feel less alone in the climate crisis. While some people, people she calls doomer dudes, are saying that it's already too late, that all is lost, she disagrees. "We quite literally have no time for nihilism," she says. Yet she also says, "In our context now, rosy hopefulness feels downright sociopathic." She wrote a short essay called "Home Is Always Worth It" in the phenomenal recent book, All We Can Save. How many of you have read parts of this? It's a wonderful book. Two women editors and all the writers are women from every walk of life. In that book, she criticizes those who talk as if our fate is sealed. She comments instead, learning the difference, she commends instead, learning the difference between hopelessness and helplessness. Because, she says, "What if we've been doing the equation backward? What if hope isn't what leads to action? What if courage leads to action and hope is what comes next?" Her call to active hope brings me to a third thinker, and that is Quaker writer Parker Palmer. Among many other things, he's founder of the Center for Courage and Renewal. I hope you will see the cords that bind him and his thinking to Ms. Hegler and Mr. Havel. Here's what Parker Palmer says. "Hope is holding a creative tension between what is and what could and should be, each day doing something to narrow the distance between the two. It's a daily thing. Again, it's not a feeling but a way of living and acting, recognizing grief as we examine the present, acting on hope as we take a step toward realizing the world that can be, holding in our hearts both our longing and our willingness to name out loud what is wrong, and not just to name it, but also to help mend it, step by step, day by day." Throughout the next few days, we'll have a lot of opportunities to learn ways we can help bridge the gap between what is and what ought to be. We'll likely find some new ones that suit us, especially in all the many wonderful workshops that are being offered. And as we go to our rest tonight, I pray that we will all hold on to the courage and to speak and act a new world into being, a creation healed. In tomorrow afternoon's Bible study, I want to focus attention on actions that are not only personal but global, on what rich countries and poor countries, rich communities and poor communities can do together. And once again, that QR code in the corner will lead you to a page with a lot of resources relevant to this Bible study. So I appreciate your being here, and I thank you very much. And I think we have some time for some questions, discussion, and whatever.
And not only for the people in the room, but also for the people...
Not only for the people in this room, but also online. Put your questions in the chat, and we have several people monitoring the chat, and we'll be happy to have Dr. Toll address them. Any questions or comments here?
I think we should wrap it up about 10 tel right or so. Because we've got maybe 15, 10 tel, something like that.
Okay. You want to tell them the timeline you're suggesting?
Oh, yeah, I'm thinking, aren't we supposed to be somewhere at nine?
In here.
In here? Oh, well, what takes that long?
And we're partying.
We're partying, okay, we're party hearty.
So if Psalm 43 is a continuation of 42, is it like a response?
No, people really don't know why it was broken into pieces. There are other places where two Psalms are mashed into one or one is stretched into two. But this division between 42 and 43 is so ancient that nobody knows why it happened. It's just that the cadences and interests of that psalmist shines through and obviously the refrain. So we don't know why it happened that way. It's an ancient problem. Yeah. Mr. Randolph. Is it okay if I walk around? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Toll. In narrowing the difference between the way things should be and the way they are, what would you say is the role of obligation?
Obligation? Can you say a little bit more?
It's... Oftentimes, people will try to be more empathetic or more... And when you study empathy, they found it really actually doesn't motivate people to do much. But if somebody feels that they have an obligation to do things, even if they're not empathetic with something, the people who feel obligated to do something will do it. So you may have like a policeman who jumps into the river to save a drunk. And it may not be something that he really empathizes with that person, but he has the obligation to go and do that. So could you comment a little bit on that and hope?
I'll try. Yeah, it's kind of a mystery to me how many different people can hear the same message, especially the message on environmental crises and climate change, and not feel obligated to do something about it. I kind of, my conversion experience happened in 2006 when I went to see An Inconvenient Truth. And I don't know how many people in that same movie theater felt that it was talking to them in the way that I felt it was talking to me. But there's a sense of, yeah, moral obligation, human, personal obligation that is, yeah, very much mixed up in the drive to narrow the gap between the way things are and the way things ought to be. Yeah. Yes. David?
Thank you again, Patricia, for a wonderful Bible study on those two Psalms. I didn't realize that two of them were connected that way. I'll tell you what troubles me, and I should have raised it in the grief section, which is, okay, your quote up there was, "Hope is holding a creative tension between what is." Many of us in this room know what is because we believe the science has told us that. But in an age of alternative facts, for folks who don't really buy into all that, how do we address that besides reading those Psalms?
Well, I've kind of, I ran across several years ago, in fact, I think I first brought it up at Montreux, this idea of the spectrum of allies. Have you heard of that? Because people were always asking, "What do I do about climate deniers?" And there were a lot more of them eight years ago than there are now. Now there's just climate drag their footers, I think, more. But there was this sense of, "I've got to go to the climate deniers and say something to them that will change their mind." And the spectrum of allies, if you can imagine this, is like a half of a pie, and it's divided into five slices. And the first one is the people who are active allies. They're working with you, like this group and the group, the 200 others who are somewhere in the country and abroad. The second piece of the pie is the passive allies, the people who agree but aren't really, haven't felt the obligation yet to do anything. The third, the middle one, is neutral. They're, you know, just, you know, the swing voters we're always hearing about just before the election. Oh, they're all the same, who just aren't moved one way or the other. The fourth one, as you can guess, is the passive opponents. And the fifth one is the active opponents, the climate deniers. So the theory there, and I think this first came up in the 1960s, in the civil rights movement, the idea that you don't go for these people over here, but if you can inspire your passive supporters to become active supporters, they move over. And some of the people who are connected to them, who were neutral, may begin to think things through some more, become passive and then active supporters. Everything shifts on the spectrum, and the people left on the edge lose their platform. And I think that's what we are seeing. The issue is, I think, we need to see it happen more quickly than it is right now. Does he get two chances?
I'm now reading to you from the chat. Shannon asks or comments, "We work in spite of them and lead by example. Eventually, they will see the change or at least enjoy the result of our work."
And that's okay, too.
I've got a friend who is one of those doomer dudes, and he's been that way since the, you know, since the 60s. And he's written books about it and so forth. But I'm just wondering whether we need them too, because they may be working on another psychological dimension. You know, I'm just wondering whether, you know, I walk away from him and I guess I feel shame. And I'm wondering if that drives me, you know, so I'll submit, you know, I'll work with the hope, but it's almost as if he's making me have more hope in order to assuage the shame. So I don't, you know, I'm just saying, maybe we needed everybody involved in this, but maybe they're not a bad part of the group. Maybe they're necessary also.
Maybe so, maybe so. I can think of a couple of people I know. One who's a dear older friend, and we share, we swap swermins all the time. And he's always accusing me of being too hopeful. And, you know, maybe so. But I do think that whenever you hear those, you know, "It's too late" kinds of language, you do stop, I mean, I find myself stopping and thinking, "Well, wait a minute, is it?" And I think that it does make me have to think it through again and say, "Is it too late?" Well, when would it possibly be too late? When would I stop trying to make this world, do a little bit more to make this world work and continue and abide? Yes, ma'am. Oh, sorry. Okay, we'll come back to you.
In bringing a person from passive supporter to active supporter, the cost is very much a factor. It's maybe monetary and maybe time and maybe effort to convert your house to a different kind of heating. And I would do that, but I can't afford it, things like that come in. How do you deal with that?
Yeah. Some people can't afford it. And in fact, I'm going to be doing a workshop on home energy stuff. And I think several workshops are going to be on the Inflation Reduction Act that is going to, promises to make home energy conservation changes to electrifying everything affordable for people, for low-income people. So I think that's the hope. But I think you're getting at something else, like resistance.
Resistance because we like our comfort.
Uh-huh, yeah. Well, the way I look at that is that I don't know. It's like the parable of the sower. You don't know where the fertile ground is and where the rocky ground is. And someone who looks pretty fertile may not be. And somebody who doesn't look very receptive may be full of fertile. It may be fertile, in fact, and may, you know, may hear you when somebody you think is going to hear you doesn't. So I'd just say, scatter the seed and let it fall where it will. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and that kind of relates to what I was going to say, because you were talking about when is the point that you give up? And that's, I think, the Vaclav Havel quote really speaks to me in that regard, that the hope does not have to do with what the outcome is going to be. That it's, that there's something is right no matter what the outcome is. And I really relate that to my faith and how I think that God is involved in the world. And, you know, I don't see that God's going to ever give up. And so there's not a point at which you give up because it's not about how, I'm sorry. It's not, there's not about a point that you give up because it's not about how it's going to turn out, since we can't see that anyway.
Exactly, yeah. My area of specialization in the Bible is Isaiah. And it, Isaiah, I'll do a little Bible thing here. Isaiah encompasses a critical time in the time, the nation of Judah's history when it was utterly destroyed by Babylon. And there was no hope. There was no reason for hope at that time. But it's because of a few prophets and a few faithful people who hung on to hoping in God even when they had no temple, no land, no nation. They were, you know, they were deported to another place. They didn't know what the future was going to look like at all. And it didn't end up looking much like the past, but they continued to hope. And I think if our ancestors in the faith can make it through that kind of crisis and hold on to their hope, there's nothing that we've seen, I hope, nothing that we will see, that rivals that. Yes, sir.
Pardon if this sounds somewhat incoherent because I'm still trying to sort all this stuff out in my own head. Part of the thing that I think about a lot is the fact that we need to pay more attention to our own natural history. There have been five mass extinctions in the history of the earth in which no less than 70% of all species were extinguished. So the earth itself is not unknown to have to face mass extinctions. And what's remarkable is that it came to flourish again after that, which may be another way of saying that we need the creation or the earth, but the earth doesn't need us. And I'm not sure that that's an idea that's very clear to folks who want to set climate concern aside. I suspect that this has, this is deeply rooted in a Jewish and Christian conviction of a privileged place of Homo sapiens in the created order and that there is, in this case, an unreasonable hope that no matter how bad things can get, somehow God is going to step in and save us. I'm not convinced of that myself. Well, yeah.
He's being coherent so far.
I know. I am going to get to a question eventually here. You know, there's a lot of argument about when the Anthropocene started. Geologists want to say sometime more recently. It seems to me it may very well have been when we stopped being hunters and gatherers and became farmers, because then we began changing the earth and making it accommodate for ourselves. How is it that we help folk get a better perspective on where we... How is it that we, we help folk get a, get a better perspective on where we actually are in the history of, of life on earth?
How do we? That was so big, I don't even know where to start. Well, I think that, first of all, the discussion of when the Anthropocene started is going to be, you know, argued out, and many scientists are going to come to a conclusion about that, if they're still there, if we're still here to discuss it. But how to... I agree with you completely that when we say, I think when we try to say, you know, you're out to save the planet, we're speaking shorthand, but you're right, that the planet doesn't need us to save it. It's survived several, several eras of extinction and continues to thrive. But we do need to save ourselves, if we think we're worth saving. And there are moments, I'll tell you, when I think, well, maybe we aren't. Maybe we, but it's a shame, because there are a lot of other species that didn't contribute a thing to this, and a lot of people who didn't contribute much to this problem. And I don't feel the right to say it's okay if they, we all go down together. So I want to say, we will do our best to save ourselves and the species that are sensitive right now. But we don't know whether we will. I had an uncle who, who, actually Don's uncle, who told me that, that climate change couldn't happen, couldn't destroy us because God promised after the flood that God would never destroy the earth again. You know, of course, the answer to that is, that's not God, this is not God, this is us. So we do, we do have work to do. We don't know for sure that we will save ourselves. Yes?
So our, our language has moved in a powerful way from global warming or boiling to climate, global warming to climate change to climate crisis to climate emergency. And I think that those, that movement of language reflects the incredible increase of visible signs, and the fires and the floods and the hurricanes and so on, so on, so on. You don't have to try to, God is taking care of the disbelievers, the deniers. The evidence is too damn strong. And so, and it's easy to give up in the face of the current increase of visible signs. And so I find myself saying, okay, courage, yeah, right, courage. Where does that come from? What, what is the, the source of continuing to believe and to put one foot in front of the other and keep acting? So just two phrases that help me. One is, taking ones, as we take one step forward, God meets us on that road. And the other is, God is hoping through us. Now, it's not our hope, it's not hoping for stuff, but God believing that God is hoping through us to build the future.
I would like to add to this wonderful sharing. There is an author, I can't remember his name, but he's French, you know, Guy. And he said, he turns, used the three things that we know, faith, hope, and love. And he wrote a little short story, actually, and he said, "There were three, there are, there were three sisters, faith, hope, and love. And faith is the youngest, the most vulnerable of them all. So faith, we need faith and we need love to make hope grow and flourish in us. Hope by itself may not survive, but love and faith go with that to bring them to us."
Thank you, thank you.
One last one from the chat. It says, it's from Chris and Cindy Berger. I think I hear Chris's voice in this. And I'll turn his, the final part of his comment into a question. It goes back to something you were saying earlier. Polls have shown that most people now accept that climate change is real. Unfortunately, too many have simply moved from climate change deniers to urgency deniers. So what do you think is one of our best approaches to deal with what you referred to as the, I think it was the climate drag their feeders or something like that?
Oh, it depends on who they are. I mean, I'm, I have been wondering for years where the lawsuits were going to be coming in. And now we're beginning to see those, especially just this week, California suing some of the large petroleum companies over the loss and damage that, that they and others have already endured. And, and I think that a lot of the feet, foot drag, when I think of foot dragging, that's where, that's who I think of first, is the, the oil and gas companies that have kept us in, as slaves to them in some ways, willingly, though I guess you can't call that slavery, call that, what do you call that? Addiction! So, but are you talking about, or is this person that, who's, who you're channeling talking about individuals or, or companies or who?
No, you can take it any way.
Okay. Well, I'll leave it at that, then.
I will say that the person who, that was Chris Berger, right? Chris is the co-stated clerk of Susquehanna Valley Presbyterian. And earlier, just, I guess it was today is, late Tuesday night, he sent out an email to all of the presbytaries in that presbytery, telling them to join this conference. So if you know a co, a stated clerk in your presbytery, tell them to do what Chris Berger did and get them to join us. I'd like to share a quick story. Forty years ago, I was a steward, which is a glorified gopher, at the World Council of Churches Assembly in British Columbia, people there from all over the world. And at the very last minute, a person joined us who a number of churches around the world tried to get out of prison because he had been protesting apartheid in South Africa. He was known in ecumenical circles as the General Secretary of the South African Council of Churches, but in the international news, not anybody of significance, just another church bureaucrat. But when he came into the meeting in Vancouver, he got a standing ovation. And he was a short little man from Africa, but he had such a sense of joy about him that was contagious. His name was Desmond Tutu. He later became Archbishop of the Anglican Church in South Africa, winner of the Nobel Peace Prize, and also very significantly coordinated the Truth and Reconciliation Commission in South Africa that helped bring healing to a very troubled land. When he got up on the stage after being released from prison to come to this international meeting, I will never forget his words from 40 years ago. He said, "I have often been a prisoner of the South African government and have been released, but as a Christian, I will always be a prisoner of hope." In the end, we believe God is working his purposes out, here and now, and in the church and around this world. Do we have great challenges? Yes. But nothing is impossible for the Maker of heaven and earth. That doesn't mean we sit on our butts and do nothing. That means in gratitude, we get out there and do all that we can. Now, I asked you several hours ago, you may remember, do you have a cell phone? Do you have a cell phone? Now you can turn it on. But seriously, tonight, tonight, if you have to wake them up, wake them up. People you care about. See if you can get some more people to join us online. We have been blessed with outstanding speakers tonight. I mean, both of you, hit it out of the park. We need more people to hear their messages. But that will only happen with your help. You have been blessed, now be a blessing and help others.